Given the current shelter in place order covering the state of California and the social distancing distance guidelines issued by federal, state, and local authorities, the city is implementing changes to participate in planning commission meetings until notified otherwise. The council chamber will be open to the public, but we will be implementing social distancing policies and will limit the number of people who may be in the council chambers. All attendees are required to wear masks to enter the council chambers. The meeting will be webcast and you can access, can be accessed through the link that is shown on the screen, your computer screen. Members of the public are encouraged to participate in meetings by accessing the webcast at the link shown on the screen, providing written comments at same website, participating by phone, or coming to the planning commission meeting in person. We are practicing social distancing and can only accommodate a maximum of 16 guests at one time. If I can call the meeting to order? And Mr. Cunningham, if you'll lead us in the flag slip.
Legion of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Antuna?
Here.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Here.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Here.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Here.
Chair Hinkle?
Here.
Approval of the minutes, or if there's any changes that need to be made?
I motion to approve the minute.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hatcher to approval of the minutes of the March 25th, 2021 planning commission meetings, the second by Commissioner Antuna. Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Chair Hinkle?
Yes. Commission's secretary comments?
We have no comments.
Any planning commission member comments? See none? Any communications and referrals?
Have none.
Okay, business from the floor. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to address the planning commission on any matter that is not listed on the agenda. Is there anybody in the chambers that'd like to speak? Is there anybody online?
None.
Okay, we'll move to item two of the public hearings. Consider approval for conditional use permit 1998-011A, a request for an amendment to a conditional use permit allowing a change in operation to upgrade an existing alcohol beverage control license from a type 41 beer and wine to a type 47 beer, wine, and distilled spirits within a exist, an existing restaurant located near the southeast corner of Fourth Street and Clovis Avenue. LD Cobb Family Cal. 2 LLC, property owner, the local Jesse Mendoza applicant, staff.
Thank you, Chairman Hinkle. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Emily. I am an assistant planner. I will present the second item on tonight's agenda, conditional use permit 1998-11A, which is a request to amend an existing CUP to allow the onsite consumption of beer, wine, and distilled liquor at an existing restaurant. The project is located on the first floor of 401 Clovis Avenue, Suite 102. The project is on a half acre lot. The property contains several units, including restaurants, retail, and professional offices. The project's site is currently operated by a restaurant called The Local. The Local currently conducts their business with a type 41 ABC license, which permits the sale of beer and wine. Historically, the project's site has also operated as a catering and restaurant business. The project's site is located within the C3 Downtown Commercial Zone District. This district requires a conditional use permit for any restaurant that serves liquor. The project is to amend a conditional use permit, a conditional use permit to expand the restaurant's operations and hours, and also to upgrade from a type 41 ABC license, which allows onsite consumption of beer and wine, to a type 47 ABC license, which allows the onsite consumption of beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The business current hours of operation are from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday to Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Sundays. The proposed new hours are going to be Monday to Wednesday, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Thursday to Saturday, 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Staff has received comments from Clovis Police Department. Their conditions of approval include a limitation on the hours at the patio accessible to customers, restrictions on any outdoor audio system, fencing requirements if alcoholic beverages are to be served in the patio area, and a condition that the kitchen shall remain fully operational while alcohol is served. This is the existing floor plan of the restaurant. The business will need to maintain kitchen operations and continue to primarily serve food. The business will also need to enclose their patio area, as seen on the western side of the property. Staff recommends consideration of approval for conditional use permit 1998-11A, an amendment to conditional use permit allowing a change in operation to upgrade an existing alcoholic beverage control license from a type 41 to a type 47. Staff is available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, we'll open the discussion now to the floor and the applicant. They have something they'd like to say?
There's not much I'd like to add, just um-
Could you give us your name?
Jesse Mendoza, I'm the owner of The Local. And just one thing I want to touch upon is the enclosure of the patio. We actually do intend on doing that within the next week or so. We're actually meeting tomorrow with Dan Cobb, the landlord, to decide what is the best way to enclose it. As of now, we're going to put planters on each side, and then a swinging gate in the front, that way we still have ADA accessibility, but we also meet ABC's requirements. Aside from that, there's really not much I'd like to add. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. Okay, it's open. Do we have anybody in the chamber that would like to speak in favor of this? See none? Is there anybody online?
None.
Okay, is there anybody in the chamber that'd like to oppose this? See none? Anybody online?
None.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the planning commission. Any discussion on? Okay, well, we'll go to a motion.
I did have one question, I'm sorry. What is the proposed size of the patio?
Did I? So unfortunately, that was not detailed in the floor plan, but we can definitely look into that for you to get a specific answer.
My assumption is that it's not obviously going to block the sidewalk.
That is correct, yes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, back to motion?
I'll make a motion. A motion that we approve, CUP 1998, Tac 011A, request for an amendment to the conditional use permit to change the hours of operation and upgrade the ABC license from type 41 to type 47.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, call for the vote.
Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Bedstead to approve CUP 1998, 11A, seconded by Commissioner Hatcher. Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Chair Hinkle?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item three of the public hearings. Consider approval, SR 2021-013, a request for a sign review permit to modify the height standards allowing for the installation of three flagpoles with plus or minus 40 feet of height at proposed government office building on property located near the southwest corner of Ashland and Villa Avenue. Cash and Group LTD property owners, Johannes McKerm Cook Land Company, applicant. Staff?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Chair Hinkle, Kelsey George, Planning and Development. For your consideration, tonight is sign review permit application SR 2021-013. So to start, I wanted to explain why this type of application was being reviewed by the planning commission pursuant to the Clovis Municipal Code. Flagpoles up to 24 feet can be reviewed administratively and approved because they are in compliance with our sign ordinance. However, any flagpole over 24 feet needs to be reviewed by the planning commission. So although the actual locations of the flagpoles are being reviewed administratively through our site plan review process, the planning commission needs to review and ultimately approve the 40-foot height request. So the subject property is located on the south side of Ashland, in between Villa and Peach Avenue. It's in the old Costco building, if you're familiar with that, or the new DSS Building, Department of Social Services. For reference, the proposed flagpole location is located on the north side of the building, set back from the primary facade. The proposed flagpoles at 40 feet would pose minimal visual impact or concern due to the height development standards of the surrounding zone districts. The parcel itself is Zone C2, which allows up to 35 feet in building height. Immediately to the east and to the south is the CM Zone District, which allows building height up to 75 feet. Across the street to the north is a Ponding Basin. There is multifamily residential to the west, but that, the nearest dwelling unit is over 1,000 feet from the proposed flagpole site, and that zone district, although it's in the city of Fresno, it allows up to 40 feet in building height. Here's the conceptual north elevation, looking south at the flagpoles in relation to the building, and here's the conceptual west elevation, looking east. The flagpoles are kind of nestled behind the primary facade at the main entryway of the building. So to kind of put the proposal in perspective, the flagpoles are proposed at 40 feet. The zone district allows buildings up to 35 feet, and the existing building is 30 and a half feet. The project will need to obtain the necessary building permits and comply with all of the lighting and illumination standards, which further would minimize any visual impacts to the area. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve sign review permit application 2021-013, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? There are, in that business park, there are other flagpoles that are 40 feet, correct?
Currently, in that parcel, I don't believe there are.
Well, in that group of businesses. The 9/11 area, I believe, has 40-foot flagpoles down there. So, and so I'm gonna, we've allowed this before. Okay, any other questions? Okay, applicant, if you'd like to say something? State your name and your address.
Good evening, commissioners, and my name is Johannes McMoore. I'm the applicant from Cookland Company. On behalf of Cookland Company, and Todd Cook is here too, we'd like to thank, first and foremost, to commissioners who helped, have, helped us previously to approve other entitlement process for this campus, just to get everybody up to speed in terms of the other flagpoles in the campus. And that is true that this is our fifth building that we are working on, and the existing B5, we call it, which is for the Child Welfare Services, does not have the flagpoles, and we are proposing to be consistent with the other buildings that are online in the campus at the moment. Public Building 1, Public Building 2, Administration Building there, and Building 3, all of them have flagpoles, which is what we are proposing here. And you're right, Commissioner, that the 9/11 memorial have even taller flagpoles there, 151 feet. So definitely, this is not something that we are just proposing for inconsistent with the, with the rest of the building. It is consistent, and we want to make sure that the, this building also will be, have the same feel to the rest of the building and tie into the rest of the campus. Any other questions that I can entertain?
Any questions for applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Like to open the floor now to those that are in favor of the flagpole. See none? In the chamber, are there any online?
None online.
Okay, open the floor to those that oppose. Any in the chamber? Don't see any. Is there any online that oppose?
None.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission. Any more discussion with staff? See none? We'll open for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve SR 2021-013.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, call for vote.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hatcher for approval of SR 2021-013, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham. Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Chair Hinkle?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item number four on the agenda. Consider approval, CUP 2021-002, a request to approve a conditional use permit to allow for a tattoo parlor, body art establishment, in a C2 Community Commercial Zone District within an existing shopping center located at 130 West Shaw Avenue, Clovis, Shaw Partners LLC. Owner, Reno Sekinger, applicant representative. Staff?
Yes, good evening again, Kelsey George, Planning and Development. As stated, for your consideration is conditional use permit, CUP 2021-002. This commi, this conditional use permit requests authorization to operate a body art establishment within the Village Square Shopping Center, which is located south of Shaw, in between Minnewawa and Villa Avenues. The proposed tenant space is currently empty, and this operation would give the shopping center an opportunity to occupy a space that would otherwise remain vacant. In 2006, the Clovis City Council approved an ordinance that defined and conditionally permitted body art establishments within the C2 Zone District. The proposed location is within the C2 Zone District. It's also heavily surrounded by the C2 Zone District, as well as other commercial zoning The Clovis Municipal Code defines a body art establishment as any permanent premises, business, location, facility, room, or any portion thereof, used or operated as a body piercing parlor, a permanent cosmetics parlor, or as a tattoo parlor. This conditional use permit proposes to provide permanent body art, body piercing, permanent cosmetics, and eyelash extensions. The hours of operation are from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily, which is consistent with other similar establishments in the area, and is also approved by the Clovis Police Department. Additionally, the project would have to comply with the County Health Department regulations, which requires that all artists meet the body art practitioner requirements and complete bloodborne and pathogen exposure training. Public notice was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject property. Staff has not received any comment regarding the project to date from the public. The project was also routed to any applicable departments and agencies, including the Police Department and the County Health Department, as stated. These comments have been incorporated into the conditions of approval and will be required to be complied with for the operation of the establishment. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit 2021-002, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Any questions for staff from commissioners? Okay, I see none from us. We'll open the floor to the applicant. They'd like to stay, say something? You'll state your name and your address?
There you go. Hello, Timothy Kirk, Reno Sekinger. Just like to thank you for the opportunity to come here today, and look forward to, if you guys have any questions, we're willing to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant?
All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, see none? Thank you. Is there anybody in the chamber that would like to speak in favor of this project? See none? Any online?
There is none.
Anybody in the chamber that would like to speak in opposition? See none? Is there anybody online?
None.
Okay, bring it back to the commission. Any more discussion on this? See none? We'll open it up for a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve CUP 2021-002, with consistency to any amendments that are attached there too.
I'll second.
Can't get the computer to work so long.
Okay, it's been, I made a motion and seconded. Call for vote?
Motion by Commissioner Cunningham to approve CUP 2021-002, seconded by Commissioner Bedstead. Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Bedstead?
Yes.
Commissioner Antuna?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Chair Hinkle?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the public hearing items. Any old business? Okay, new business? We have an item under new business?
Yeah, Dave will go over the new business.
We wanted to run past you this evening. Kelsey's waving at the side of my head, distracting me. We wanted to bring your attention that we're looking for, forward to transitioning from what are basically called summary style minutes to action style minutes. This is following the city council's transition from the same summary style minutes to action style minutes. If you, I think you all received the city's Friday reports that are distributed by the city clerk's office. Do you get those? The city clerk's office let the council know at the end of February that this was, this transition was going to be occurring, beginning with their April meetings. So I don't think even those minutes have yet been prepared or seen by the city council yet, because it would have started probably with April 5th meeting. But nevertheless, that transition has occurred, and the reason behind that transition is kind of multifold. One is that the historic reliance on detailed minutes has been really a reflection that public information was most readily served by being able to see some level of detail as to what occurred at a meeting. And with the way that the information is distributed today, with these meetings being recorded and almost instantaneously available through video and audio, there's really not the same need that has historically existed. Another reason is that the, these are not historically verbatim minutes, they're summary minutes, and some of the detail, the nuances of what occurs at a meeting could be lost, and therefore you can get a misleading sense sometimes if you're looking at just the minutes and not relying on the actual recordings that are available. The Clerks Association of the State of California has published recommendations regarding preparation of minutes, and has recommended on a statewide level the transition from summary to action minutes. So for those various reasons, the clerk's office is transitioning to the council, and at the clerk's advice, we're following suit with the planning commission minutes. The, since I have been with the city going on close to two years now, one of the things that I had heard is that the council might have been looking for a little bit more detail in terms of what happened at planning commission meetings, and that they might have used the minutes to gain that information. I asked the city clerk about that, and he said that he has never in his tenure heard a council ask for more information regarding planning commission meetings, and he's confident that, that when an item comes up before your body that might have some, let's say it's controversial, or it might have some extended discussion, or there may be some points that you made that you want the council to know about, then we can summarize those in the staff report for the council. So effectively, the onus becomes one from staff to adequately communicate what happened at the commission meeting. But even then, the council members, if they want that detail, they can do what everybody else can do, which is go to and watch the, watch the video online. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and let you know that we're going to start doing that, just like the city clerk is doing that for the council. Probably start that beginning with tonight's meeting. And I don't want you to have any fear that if there are issues or concerns or items of public controversy, that somehow those won't be conveyed to the council. We'll just do that in a summary version in the staff report. That's our plan, and if you have any comments or recommendations on that, we'd be happy to hear them, but following the clerk's advice, we are moving in that direction.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting at 6:30.